It is 6:39. This is a meeting of the Pioneer Valley Regional School District School Committee. Today is Monday, June 22nd, 2020. We are meeting via the platform Google Meet. This meeting is being held via Google Meet in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 orders of sending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter 30A, Section 20. This meeting is also being recorded and streamed live by Burniston-Northfield Community Television Station and will be available for viewing through their Facebook page. So I just would like to take a quick attendance for official, to officially begin. So I have Seth.
Yes, I'm here.
Mike Townsley.
Mike Townsley here.
Jeanne Milton.
Jeanne Milton here.
Jim Bell.
Jim Bell here.
Sue O'Reilly-McRae.
Sue O'Reilly-McRae here.
David Young.
David Young here.
Abby Proff.
I'm here.
Sharon O'Neal.
Karen O'Neal here.
Sharon Fontaine.
Sharon Fontaine here.
Okay. Pat or Jess, are you with us this evening? Okay, maybe they'll be joining us late. First and foremost, if everyone could put their microphones on mute unless they are speaking, so that will reduce the amount of background noise this evening, and that way we can hear everyone speaking when everyone unmutes themselves. So we have one item on our agenda this evening. It's old business, the FY21 budget amendment vote. We need to revote because we need a two-thirds vote in order to pass the budget.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mike?
Can I make a motion?
Go right ahead.
I'd like to motion to accept, make a motion to accept the FY21 budget as presented in the amount of $14,356,936.
Seth, grab that second.
Is there a second?
I question that figure. Can you say the figure again?
I will say the figure again. If there's any issues with the figure, I'll have Tanya make that correction and we'll correct it. It's $14,356,936, and that was in the FY21 amended column.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge, Pat, did you just join us? I saw your name pop up on the screen.
I think she's muted.
I see her. I just, she's not muted. I see her name on the list. Pat, can you hear us? Okay.
Okay. Sorry, I know I was here, I just, okay. Who's calling?
Perfect. So.
I'm on, so Mike, are you saying?
So, hold on one second.
Hold on a second.
So, we have a motion on the floor. Seth, did you, you seconded that motion?
I did, yep.
Okay, thank you. So now is the time for discussion.
Jeanne Milton has a question.
Go ahead.
The Chair has a question.
So Mike, are you saying that the changes will be followed as per what was presented to us?
The budget's the same as what it was last time, the number I just read.
I understand that, but that's with cuts.
That's correct. That's correct. I'll let Mr. John Schedule speak to any of the cuts that the admin team recommended that we voted on last time, which wasn't a legitimate vote because it wasn't a two-thirds vote. I'm proposing that that's the number that we're going with.
Kristin, do you want to go through the bullet points that we spoke to earlier this week as well, just so that the school committee has an idea of why this is what it is and why we have to keep the number as such?
Yes. So there's a couple of reasons why, Tanya explained to me in great detail as to why we have to keep the budget as it is and especially vote on it by July 1st. One of the major things that we have to take into consideration this evening is our E and D. If we don't vote this budget by July 1st, we lose the availability to use that as a revenue source. And if folks have more detailed questions, we can get into that. And the other issue that we have is we have provided assessments to two towns, and if we do not follow through with this vote for the budget that's being proposed this evening, we will end up having to go into a 1/12 budget.
So let me just clarify. So the assessments have actually been provided to all four towns based on what was voted on May 27th. And the school district will be in a 1/12 budget because only two of our four towns are voting. But if this does not pass at the figures that are presented in front of us and the assessments given to the towns, those towns will then also have to go to special town meeting and ask the state for a 1/12 budget, which I believe, and David can hopefully back me up with some information on this, the deadline for the towns to request a 1/12 budget has also passed. I do know two of our four towns are doing that, but the two that are holding their meetings this Saturday and Monday have not requested that 1/12 because they did schedule town meetings before June 30th in hopes to pass a budget.
I believe that towns that haven't had their town meeting before the end of the fiscal year, the COVID-19 keeps the door open. But if, I would agree fully that the effect of not meeting this with a two-thirds vote and would be that the towns will act on an insufficient amount, and that's technically a fail, failed vote, and they would have to remeet. And I would just want to urge everybody to vote to support the administration. And I'm looking at the potential need for additional counseling as something that we would meet in the same way we would meet special needs that's unanticipated. And I wonder, you know, whether we're going to be doing business as per usual come September. And so, yeah, I share the same concern for the support of the students, but we need, as a committee, to have more discussion very quickly about how we're moving forward in late August, September. And I would urge everybody, I left the meeting last time, but I would have voted for the cuts. And so I will support this. I think the towns that haven't had a town meeting because of COVID-19 don't lose their ability to act on their free cash. The emergency keeps it open. But the school district, we can meet. We're having our meeting. We're the legislature. So Tanya's right on that.
So Kristin, I have, I have a comment.
Okay, I'm going to go to Pat because she was next, and then I'll go to you, Sharon, okay?
Okay.
Because she came after Jeanne. So go ahead, Pat.
Go ahead and talk to Sharon. I just was going to ask you what the motion was, but I have understood now as the meeting goes on.
Okay. And I just, excuse me for one second, Sharon. I don't mean to cut you off, but did I just see someone else join the meeting? Jess, is that you? There was a cell phone number that just, whoever it was, just left the meeting with the last two digits, 38. That may have been Jess. All right, go ahead, Sharon, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I think that we should vote this budget through tonight. Because much of what David has said, the towns need our vote and need this budget in, and we need to get it done, as Tanya was saying, by July 1st. So I'm in favor of the budget being passed tonight with the reductions.
Yeah. And Kristin, can I have one more?
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, go ahead, Pat.
Okay. I have spoken to our town's administrative assistant at length. She says that she would think that voting this budget was a mistake because she thinks that next year is going to be a lot more difficult than this year ever thought of being as far as the COVID-19 reimbursements and expenses and all that. So she is, was sort of supporting not voting for this move, which is contrary to what David just said. But that's where I'm coming from. I am not comfortable with this at all. I think we're doing our kids a disservice, and I don't think that the towns would think badly of having a larger budget at this point because our expenses, we have no idea what the expenses are going to be. And short of having a special town meeting to meet those expenses, I don't know how we're going to do. I mean, the administration had come to us earlier saying that they had a bare bones budget, and they didn't want to cut it. And most of the budget subcommittee said, "Cut it." And so they went back and did it, but I'm not sure how comfortable they are with that. I certainly am not.
Okay, thanks, Pat. Sharon, and then Jeanne, and then Tanya.
Yeah, I spoke with.
Hand up too.
Okay, Jim, you'll be after Tanya, okay? Go ahead, Sharon.
I spoke with, I spoke with Lyden Selectman today too, and he was saying that the governor feels that there may be a 20% cut in the cherry sheet when it comes out for the towns. There'll also probably be a 20% less in the amount of the state checks that we'll receive. And also, there's already one town who is going to be behind at a loss for their tax revenue this year by thousands of dollars. So to me, I think this is the right decision for all the towns with this budget.
Go ahead, Jeanne.
Okay, my first one is for John. John, what's going on with the DESI task force on reopening schools?
Yeah, there's some level of confidentiality I have to keep, but you should be hearing some more concrete guidance this week, in the next few days, about how they plan to reopen schools. You know, unless things shift, obviously, you know, cases could spike and things could change that plan. But within the next few days, you should hear some guidance coming from DESI about the reopening of schools. And I can just tell you this, it's probably going to look a little more normal than people think. So I think there's going to be some more in-person schooling than, you know, than maybe what people are thinking.
So.
That's not all I can say really at this point, but I can update you as soon as that officially, you know, comes out.
DESI's been talking with the governor about this?
Yes, they're, I'm on the committee with the governor's office and the Department of Ed and the health professional.
Okay, so my next question is, there is a huge amount of personal safety supplies that are going to be needed when school reopens. Recommendation for the size of Pioneers to have like 2,000 face masks. Has all of this been figured into the budget? It's not just face masks, it's also face shields, protective downs, and has this been figured in with this budget? I don't think it has.
We've already made a purchase for next year.
Right. We've already purchased a lot of these supplies, and, you know, we do have some CARES money that's coming too, that we can use to help us. So this is all in the budget. I recommend this budget passed as is, as presented. I really think we need to do, like I said before, what's best for the town. And I think best for the towns. And you know, there are comments when we reduced the budget, you know, by certain members of the school committee saying, "Well, you know, this is nothing to be proud of." But we just did what every other school district is doing now. We just did it first because we knew this was coming. We know the impact. This is going to be a couple of years that's going, it's going to impact towns and schools. And so I feel comfortable that we're going to meet all the needs of the students. I feel comfortable with the budget, and I think we need to proceed and vote the budget and all work together, especially with the towns, to help everybody get through this.
Jim, go ahead.
Me?
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I just want to urge that we stand behind our administration and say yes. That's it.
Thanks, Jim. Tanya, did you have something else that you wanted to say?
I did. I forgot the one bullet point of the fact that this is also the budget that was presented to the state when we had to submit for the 1/12 budget by June 1st. And I don't want to go into too much detail, but just to support what John said and what I had mentioned, we have purchased a large sum of PPE equipment for both the custodians, our nursing staff, and we have CARES Act money, and both Northfield and Burniston have both come to us asking what our needs are as a school district for their CARES Act funding that's coming down. So we will have funding available once further guidance comes from the state on additional needs that we have to meet for next year.
Thank you, Tanya. Jess, are you here with us this evening, calling from a telephone line with the last two digits, 38?
Yeah, I think I just finally unmuted from that, sorry.
Okay. Perfect. Nope, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure I had the correct number of attendees here. Thank you.
Yeah.
So we have a motion on the floor, a second. Is there any other discussion before we place the vote?
Yeah, I have a concern. It's Sue.
Go ahead, Sue. It's Sue, okay, go ahead.
Yeah. You know, the only thing I'm really stuck on here is the counselor position at the high school. That's a real sticking point for me. I know we have a telehealth model that we've sort of ushered in a little sooner than expected. I know we have people that are supposedly dual certified. I just think this is a time when we need someone who's known and has a track record that students know they can count on. And I just am concerned that that's cutting too far. So I haven't heard from Kevin, and I share Pat's concern that the admin team put forward a certain budget, and that was what was presented. And then when the budget subcommittee said, "You have to cut further," I'm not, I'm not clear that the admin team was part of that cut further. I'm just really concerned. It feels like the one thing I cannot let go of and cannot get comfortable with.
Okay. This is Jess. Can I follow on that for a second?
Sure.
So I have another concern about that piece, which has kind of come up for me too over these past couple of weeks, which is that we don't have a female counselor. And I know that nothing should be based on gender, but I do feel that both boys and girls, through all of these different age groups that we're talking about, have some very strong reasons why they are not going to see someone of a different gender. And that there is a real vital importance of having both genders represented on campus, especially if we're going to be doing more on campus for the safety of our kids and to help them.
Thanks, Jess. Tanya, could you speak to that grant that you mentioned, please, in the chat?
Yes, so Ariel has actually applied for a competitive grant that has been put out there, and I don't have the exact name of it in front of me, but she has fully applied for a, it's a mental health services grant for next year, which would allow PVRS to essentially have somebody in the high school, another adjustment counselor that would serve as an adjustment counselor and to enhance the BRIGHT program that's already running. So if we were awarded that grant, that would be something we could re-implement through that grant, and there's a very good chance that we will get that. I don't know the exact date that the approval of that will come through, but she did apply for that, and we're just waiting for an approval at this point in time.
So I see Principal Kevin Burke, you wrote it's the SEL grant. Is that correct? I don't know if you want to share some information regarding that. If Tanya hasn't provided all the information, you'd like to.
Tanya provided all the information. She just said she didn't remember the name. So it's a social mobility grant through the state.
Wonderful. Thank you. Sue, go ahead.
So, you know, part of my concern is the upheaval of having a person, not having a person, and changing a person. So if we got this grant, would the person who's been in the position be reassigned to their position? Or would we be leaving them in a different position and hiring another person for the high school? Because that is a concern to me as well.
So Erica would be recalled into the position back to the high school under our union contract and as would the elementary counselor that was bumped from the recall procedure in the union contract.
Thank you, Tanya.
You're welcome.
Hi, Jeanne.
I personally don't feel totally comfortable waiting to see if we get the grant that Ariel's applying for. That's putting, that's just saying, well, if we can find the money, you're important. But if we don't have the money, you're not important. And I think we're doing a big disservice to our students. If you have a girl in seventh, eighth, ninth grade who's having issues, she's not going to go to a male counselor. And also, that's also putting the male counselors possibly in jeopardy because they're going to be meeting alone in privacy with a female student.
So I just want to put one thing out there regarding, we are now in an age where we have a variety of gender identification, and I want to be really careful and really respectful that we're not singling anyone out because we can't speak for the entire student body about who they identify or how they identify as a gender or who they may identify.
And I understand.
As a counselor of a specific gender.
I understand that, Kristin. I mean, my current employer, we all have to put whether we're I, she, he, him, they next to our names. But I, dearest, I'm just speaking, I wasn't singling any student out. I was just thinking as a new student going into the school, that's a possibility.
The other thing I wanted to remind everyone is that when John and I met with the state at the beginning of all of this and a message that has been consistently reiterated is that the impact of the COVID is going to impact our budget FY24. And it's going to be a tremendous impact, and we are going to have to continue to face cuts. So it's something to keep in the back of our mind. Pioneer has not had the best track record with our finances, and I want to make sure that we establish some stability and that we are, I hear everyone's concerns and, you know, I understand with the change of counselors, but we do have a program to implement that will meet the mental health needs of our students.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Pat.
Exactly what I said earlier at speaking to our town administrator is that impact of COVID-19 is going to be with us for a long time. So to chop everything out today, what are we going to have left to chop next year? And that's number one. Number two, I think we need both male and female counselors. It makes no difference who the child is. Maybe a male student wouldn't want to go to a male counselor or a female counselor. You've got to have, you know, it's nice to have both sexes be able to go to a counselor they're comfortable with. And I just, I think it would be too bad not to put that position back. And I'm just not comfortable with the whole deal. Sorry.
Mike?
Yes, I'd like to, I think, first off, I think we're bordering discrimination talks the way the conversation's coming out here about, you know, male or female counselor. There is other people in the building, and if the policy was established that if you had somebody or you could have it set up so that if you have a student that wants both genders or whatever, that that can be done. That can be done through the, to a policy. And maybe the policy subcommittee should take that up for future discussions. But if we look around at the counties around us and the towns around us and what the difficulties are already being seen, I think we've done a good job to present a budget without cutting the teachers, providing smaller classroom sizes to the students, and losing minimal staff. And the main thing is we didn't lose the teaching staff for the students. And that is a goal. In the counselors' positions, I believe that nobody's lost their jobs there, and that is a good thing. Is it, could we all ask for more stuff and expect it? Sure. But in these times, I think this committee, the budget subcommittee, the full school committee, has done a lot of hard work with all the other subcommittees to get to where we are. And I don't think that the budget we have is going to be detrimental to the students.
So whoever is not speaking, if you could please mute yourself because there's a lot of background noise, and I hear a telephone ringing, and that's really, really challenging for BNCTV and all of our viewers that are out there. It makes it really difficult for our community to hear what's going on. Go ahead, Sue.
I just have a question. With a committee of 12, how many votes are needed for a two-thirds vote?
So we need.
Eight. Eight, okay.
Eight, yes, eight.
Kristin, this is Jess again. Can I ask a question?
Yep, sure.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
How much is the grant that we're applying for? If we left the position in place for the adjustment counselor and then got the grant, could we change those dollars over to grant money?
Mike, excuse me, John or Tanya, could you speak to that or Kevin, please?
The grant is $96,000, but we can't add a position back to the budget and then take it out once the grant funds are received. Provide assessments to the towns within seven days of the amended vote.
Does that answer your question, Jess?
What else could we do with the grant money? How could we make that work?
So the grant was specifically written for the adjustment counselor position and enhanced BRIGHT program at the high school.
So we can rewrite them with the grant?
Sorry, can you restate that because you cut out?
So that has to be, their positions have to be rewritten into the budget with the grant?
No, it's not rewritten into the budget. It would be recalled and the funding source is the grant, not the general fund budget. So it doesn't, when the grant is, if the grant is approved, nothing happens to the budget.
Could that money go to E and D? That was the money for those positions?
The money's not in the budget for the position right now. And if we, if we add money to this budget and the towns then pay for it and we're covering it from a grant, I don't think that's a responsible thing to do in the situation our towns are facing with cut funding next year to add to the budget and ask them to fund it just to turn around and put it into our excess and deficiency next year and have to wait to spend it for two or three years because of the oversight we're under, under the state.
Karen, I saw that you had your hand up.
Yes. I'd like to remind everybody that like.
Yes, um, I'd like to remind everybody that Lydon had a significant increase in its tax portion of the budget last year. And for the first time in a long time, I recall a town meeting where they weren't very supportive. We are looking at an increase with this proposed buzz budget as well. If we were to add back money, I don't think Lydon would pass the budget. That's just, that's my reading of things because we're looking at a lot of difficulties as well.
Thanks, Karen.
So you see, even though the other three towns are seeing a decrease, we're seeing an increase in our budget with this particular school budget.
Okay, if there's not any other further discussion, Mike, go ahead.
My major concern with this not passing is ending up with a 1/12 budget. And then losing more than what we have right now is a serious concern to me that if we don't pass this budget, we will be seriously affected and the towns are going to lose confidence in us. Especially where two towns have already put their things on the warrant. And I know the town of Berniston would not be very happy if we added something back to this budget. Thank you.
And the 1/12 would be less than what we currently have budgeted. So this, correct me if I'm wrong, correct, Tanya?
So actually, because this budget is less than our FY '20 budget, this is the budget that we would be operating on in a 1/12, but it would be minus the $150,000 in E and D. So if we don't vote this budget, we lose $150,000 in revenue source, which means we then would have to cut another $150,000 in services to our students when we come back, if we had to come back to the table. And your towns would have to have special town meetings and ask for 1/12 budgets.
Thanks, Tanya. So again, if we don't vote this budget, then we put ourselves in a worse off predicament. Go ahead, Jeannie.
I just know that I spoke to some of the officials for the town of Berniston and they questioned about direct services being cut to the students such as the adjustment counselor position. And they just feel that that part of the budget is totally wrong. Don't shake your head, please, Mike, because I did talk with people from the town.
So I just would ask that everyone remain professional. The comments, the negativity or the unprofessional comments, we cannot have that. We are a professional board of public officials for the school committee. So please remember our ethics and our professionalism when we're dealing and having these discussions, a very sensitive topic. Okay? And remember about the chat feature as well. That's something that we really shouldn't be using. We should be, because folks, if they are listening in via telephone, they cannot see that on the chat feature. And we are a body of the public. So we should, if we have comments or if we have anything we'd like to ask, we should be doing it verbally, not through the chat. Go ahead, Sue.
So it looks like we have a quarter of our committee at least with serious concerns about this one position in a very large budget. Is there no way to make this work for the people that have this specific concern?
John, do you want to speak to that? For Tanya or Mike as the budget subcommittee chair?
All right, well, I can, I can, I can speak to it. I think it's the same thing we've been talking about for six months with the same position. We're looking at the position, not the employee in the position. And we're telling you, the administration is telling you, we can meet the needs of our students minus this position in the high school. And so that's, again, I recommend voting the budget as is and seem to just be rehashing the same topic. And I know it's an important one and a sensitive one, but I don't know how many more times I can say it. We, we recommend this budget. We wouldn't have brought it forward if we didn't. And we recommend voting it as is.
Tanya, what is the exact number in E and D that we have at this moment?
So we have $510,000 certified and $150,000 that we're being allowed to use by the overseer. Well, by the state essentially. Desi will only let us spend down a certain portion because we're being required to keep a certain percentage.
And so by not passing the budget, we lose that as a revenue.
We would lose $150,000 as a revenue source because it has to be recertified after July 1st.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other, any other discussion before we move to a vote?
Can I say something, Kristen? This is Sharon.
Sure, I just ask you Hannah first and then I'll go to you, Sharon, okay?
Okay.
Sue? So I, I, I just want to say how frustrating it is for an array of voices in the community and on this committee to express concerns and to have them not fully be addressed and just be told we will be meeting the needs of students. I don't buy it. It doesn't, I don't feel convinced. And I feel set up in a high-stakes situation with this budget.
Can I address that, Kristen?
Go ahead, John.
I don't know if you missed the past meetings, Sue, but I brought in Maureen Donovan. We've talked about this at length in detail. And I just feel like.
I was at the meeting, Donovan, and I listened to her, John.
There were multiple meetings. It was multiple meetings. We've hashed this out since the winter. And so I don't know what else to say. There's nothing else I can say to convince you. So I leave it up to the school committee and you will be the ones answering to the towns. I support the towns. I support our staff, our students. And like Mike said, if you look around us, we're every other school district and what they're going through now, where we are, we're looking pretty good.
Karen, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't think that this district can afford to lose $150,000. And I see this district as being in a way better position than many of them, the other districts in this part of the state. We all read the paper. Greenfield's going to, they're talking about layoffs. Orange is having difficulties. Gil Montague is looking at cutting a lot of different things in their budget. We have pared ours down to a manageable state without deeply cutting into student services. And we have the available, the telephonic health system that can help us out with this, the counseling that we're going to need. And there are male and female counselors within that system. So I think we should really vote this budget in and stand behind our needs of our kids, our towns, and support the administration with the decisions that they've made.
All right, Abby had a comment and then we will move to a vote.
I saw Pat's hand too, after mine, Kristen.
Okay, my computer decided freezing, so thank you. I can't access the chat feature.
No problem. So I hear, John, what you're saying is that the administration sees that this is something that we can cover. We've received letters from counselors in high school who say that they don't have the time for this. And I'm having trouble with that disconnect where staff who fill these positions are saying, we don't have the time. And the administration is saying, yes, they do. And I'm having trouble figuring out how to balance that and, and who to leave, I guess.
So can I, Kevin Burke, are you still with us?
I'm still here.
Okay. Could you provide us some input or your opinion as the principal, Pioneer? Your thoughts on this regarding this discussion that we're having and maybe you can assist us?
Yeah, so I, I think I've said this before when I talked to the budget subcommittee and when I've talked to the school committee in the past. Obviously, anytime that we do cuts within a school, we are, we are doing the same amount with less people. That's what happens in any position that you are going to cut. So does there have to be adjustments? And do you have to readjust what you are doing within those positions? Certainly. Is it ideal in any time to make cuts? Absolutely not. You know, this, this process went through, I think initially we were looking at a point five. That changed to a full time in this position. We have, we, we have services in place. We have a grant that we're looking for. We are going down the road to try to support this, this position and bring it back. We wouldn't be doing that if we didn't think that this position would help our students. But we are still trying and these are the avenues we're taking to try to make sure that we do have this position in place. You know, and also if you look, if, if you look at social emotional support in a school, it, it happens in many different levels and in many different tiers. And so when you start talking about gender, students find an adult within the building. And if you go to any SEL conference, they're going to tell you, and that's where advisories come into place, having a student make a connection with a adult in the building. That doesn't have to be a school counselor. It doesn't, it can be any staff member within that building. As long as someone makes a connection with a staff member and there's someone for them to go to, that is the biggest and, and most important first step in social emotional health. And that's, that's where this starts on the ground level. And we have other things in place to help support it going from there. So I'm not sure if people have other questions, but like I said, and I'll, and I'll end it with this again. Anytime you make a cut, you're, you're losing a position and you're losing services.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay, Pat, you wanted to speak after Abby? Pat, are you still with us? I don't see her.
Okay, now I'm, now I'm there. My bag was off. Is there no way that we can meet in the middle somewhere? There's a few of us that are really hung up on this counseling position. There, and there's other people that are saying the opposite of what some of us are saying. Is there any way we can meet in the middle to put this position back in there without, and, and still be able to pass the budget before July 1st? There, there has to be some way that we can negotiate and make it work for everybody. It's just really frustrating. And I, I go along with what Abby says. Well, I, I just, I'm confused.
Okay, folks, if you're not speaking, if you could please mute yourself, that would be really helpful just so that we can eliminate any background noise. Excuse me, for listeners and our viewers. So if there's no other comment, we will vote. Go ahead, Jeannie. And that'll be our, our last question comment so that we can move to the vote.
Kevin, my question is for you. And have any of the staff received the mental health first aid training?
What do you, what do you mean by the mental health first aid?
The mental health first aid course.
I've, I've had that.
Presented at some of the schools.
I've had, there, I mean, there's a lot of different training. I, I got a first aid mental health aid certificate a year and a half, two years ago.
And do you get the updates?
Do I get the updates?
Yeah, I receive updates every month.
I, I don't get updates every month.
Then it mustn't be the same program.
Well, there's, there's programs that are out there.
My concern is that are all teachers prepared to ask the tough questions of students? Do you feel like you're going to harm yourself? That is one of the first questions that has to be asked of many of these students. And even as a healthcare professional, I find it's, it's even a little difficult for me to ask, but it's a vital question to ask these students in this day and age. And are all teachers prepared to do that? Because that's one of the things that will have to happen.
When, when it gets to that level, typically are referring, referring students to crisis, which we can bring right on, which can do an assessment. So as long as we are identifying students who are in distress and have social emotional issues, we can, we can then bring students to the help that they need. And in fact, once, once those questions are asked, usually by a school adjustment counselor, which any trained school adjustment counselor can ask those questions, they go to crisis or they go to the emergency room anyway at that point.
Thank you, Kevin, for explaining that because I was just going to say as a mental health professional, asking a student that question, there has to be more information around it. It's not just something a teacher should be asking right out of the gate. There's a process and there are services. If we're concerned that a student is not safe, we should be not furthering and asking more questions but calling crisis. There are protocols in place for that because teachers are there to teach and they are there to be a supportive adult and individual, like Kevin said. But that requires further support, more than someone can handle.
And I agree with you, Kristen, but I'm thinking about the student who comes to you because you have been, you've called them to your office because they've been cutting. And that's where that question would be asked. If a student is presented with something like cutting and do the, are the parents aware? If they're not aware, then it's, you know, I'm just, I'm looking at that scenario.
We have a nurse, we have a school psychologist, we have two school adjustment counselors. We also have a dean of students.
Yeah, and I, I don't feel comfortable getting into the nitty gritty of the situations because there are a tremendous amount of situations that could be presented to us. And putting one blanket statement about how something could unravel would not be in the best interest of. So if there's.
Kristen, I'd like, can we move to the vote?
I can't hear you, Mike. I'm sorry. You just cut out.
I'd like to move to the vote.
All right. I'm just going to go down the list for our candidates. Before you vote, please state your name so that our listeners who aren't not viewing this through the video can know who is voting. So we'll begin, Sharon. Sharon? Sharon, are you here?
I'm in favor of keeping the budget the way it is.
Okay, is that a yes vote?
Just a yes vote to keep the budget the way it is.
Karen?
Uh, Karen O'Neill, yes.
Thank you. Abby?
Abby, Pat, no.
David?
David Young, yes.
Thank you. Jess?
Jess Marshall, no.
Sue?
Who?
Sue O'Reilly McCray.
Sue O'Reilly McCray, yes.
Jim? Jim Bell?
Jim Bell, yes.
Sorry, Jim, I couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. Jeannie?
Jeannie Milton, no.
Mike?
Mike Townsley, Berniston, yes.
Pat?
Seth Kratz, yes.
Pat? Pat?
Did it again. I forgot to turn off my, or open my mic. Tasha in Northfield, no.
Okay, thank you. And Kristen, Northfield, yes. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, yes. And one, two, three, four, no. So we have the two-thirds. Tanya, do you need anything else from us this evening as far as those numbers for the state?
No, I just need to update the letter with the votes from the committee at this time and let them know that it was an eight yes, four no vote, and that will be sufficient.
Okay, good. Thank you. That is all that we have. Um, that is all that we have.
Kristen, can I speak?
Yes?
Can I speak?
Sure.
Before we stop? I just want to say, this was really, really, really hard for me. I did speak with several people before tonight. I appreciate all the work that's been done on this budget. I don't agree with cutting the position, but I'm crossing my fingers that the grant comes through. And I think this sets us up for challenges. I, I, it meant a lot to me, Principal Burke, that you spoke to this. And I didn't feel like we could lose the $150,000. So I felt caught in a process, which is really concerning. But just wanted people to know where I was coming from.
Chrissy? Yes, Karen, is that you?
I don't, yes, it's meeting Sharon. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I have, I have a request. I have a request. I, I have a request.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on the floor already, Jeannie.
Well, I had a quest, I had a request for Tanya. But I'll send you to her in an email.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
I think we can let members talk.
Agreed. We have.
Ridiculous.
So there was a motion on the floor in a second. I'm just following the process.
I had my hand up before the motion. Kristen, I had my hand up before the motion.
Okay. Jeannie, I'm sorry, this is really challenging when we have to use this, when I'm trying to navigate the screen and the notes and listening to folks that don't have video. So I apologize in advance. Jeannie, would you like to send an email? Would you feel that's appropriate to do so? Or do you feel like you would rather speak to the committee? You're on mute. You're on mute, Jeannie.
I, I would like it if she would send her, send her the attachments different, separate from when Joanne sends out a meeting about, a notice about the meeting. Because then I, I have a hard time finding the meetings because Tanya always sends hers out with, through Joanne. So she could send it separately, it would be appreciated.
Okay, we'll make sure that that's set up differently as we move forward.
Thank you.
Can we vote now?
Yep.
Vote to Sharon, Sharon Fontaine.
Okay.
Tim, yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Thanks, Tim. Sharon, yes? Karen?
Karen, yes.
Abby?
Abby, yes.
David, I think he already left the meeting. Jess?
Jess Marshall, yeah.
Sue?
Sue O'Reilly McCray, yes.
Jim already said yes, Jeannie?
Jeannie Milton, yes.
Mike?
Yes, Mike Townsley, yes.
Seth?
Seth Kratz, yes.
Pat?
Pat, yes.
Thank you. And Kristen, yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Everyone stay well.